You know, you can't hold up signs. So I'm not going to turn around and see if you give that to him. Is that last? Yeah, nope, 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 no signs and no...
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
I'm very excited.
I don't know if I can say that. I can say that as a person. Sir, is it to make sure I don't go over three minutes?
You got it.
You're powerful. Sir, how are you doing? So, uh, I'm gonna turn around first. All these guys, I'm...
Alright, we're gonna try and get us up here.
Thank you for coming. I'm going to go over the state, the senate chair of the Republican Party, Senator George Croun, the co-chair of the House, Chair Cronin, Vice Chairman of the White Staff, and then I'll let her introduce herself. I've got David Callender, Senate Counsel to the Committee, and Dan Landry, Judiciary Staff. Representative Sheila Harrington, ranking minority member. Vice Chair Jim Cantwell, French Amendment, Chief Legal Counsel to the Judiciary Committee. On my far right, second person in, Representative Dan Hunt. To his left, Representative Jim Lyons. To his left, Representative Mike Day. And to his left, Representative Paul Tucker.
Thank you. So, the order for the day is gonna be as follows. We're, I'm going to call Attorney General Harshrager for a general. We can come on up here. Then, we're gonna take the testimony from the Governor's team, the District Attorney's on their bill, group bills. Then, we're going to go to the Jim Brooks issues. And then, we're going to go to guardianship and other issues. So, Attorney General Harshrager.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Chair Cronin. Cronin, and thank you all of you for this time. And I know there are many, many important things you have before you. It's my pleasure to be here. Thank you very much. I had a chance to testify on Senate 1177 before. This is about to create the Office of Public Guardian in Massachusetts. The reference I made was that now, so over twenty, over twenty years ago, as Attorney General, we focused a great deal on elder protection issues, on disability rights, and a variety of other issues relating to people who without us had no one. And we made, thanks to you, many major changes in guardianship. And now, a system that is quite complicated, but also very good now, except for the fact that in the course of this, we believe over three to five thousand individuals, the so-called unbefriended, have no access to guardianship or any, or support decision-making, or any of the possible alternatives. And one of the primary functions, I think, of government is to make sure that we are there in the appropriate legal environment for those who without us have no one. And, and one of the problems is that there are simply no resources for many of the so-called unbefriended. And that's what the Office of Public Guardian is established for. Not to create a new state agency with huge amounts of funding, but rather to create a vehicle by which we can begin to oversee and monitor, hold accountable existing systems, but also provide a guardianship opportunity of last resort. And not just guardianship only, but whether it's special kinds of guardianships, limited guardianships, decision-making services, but having a state agency that is the advocate for these kinds of services and is, sets the standards, provides training, supervision, and accountability for others involved in this would help us deal with not only the needs of the unbefriended, but the potential for abuses, which I'm sure many of you are aware of. And we're fully aware of this. And my own view is that the Office of Public Guardian would provide a vehicle for that advocacy to make sure that when there are problems identified, there is some agency there responsible for dealing with it. The final point I wanted, would like to make, is that we've all talked a lot about and care about access to justice. This is a key access to justice issue, because these are people who simply do not have the resources, and we do not have a vehicle for providing services for people in very vulnerable situations. Sometimes elderly, sometimes disabled, sometimes simply having no friends and family, no access to the system. And we know what a difference a lawyer, a good trained advocate can do, what difference they can make. That's what the Office of Public Guardianship, I believe, will do. And that's what your bill, both of you have worked very hard on this. We've worked with many stakeholders. We thank your staff for their participation, and we want to work with them. We don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good, but we do think this would be a major step forward in Massachusetts for guardianship, for the poor, the powerless, the elderly, and disabled, Senator, and Chair Cronin.
Thank you for your advocacy for this. Without, without anyone else, thank you.
And I did make it close to the three. I know that was your surprise, you're surprised about it, but District Cantwell's even more surprised.
I wanted to say good present to get the people in the room. Any questions for members of the panel?
Thank you, many of us, for participating with, with our staff and people and talking about this. We appreciate it very much, and thanks for everybody else's patience. I appreciate it. And particularly Secretary Bennett, who I know is waiting as well. Thank you.
Secretary Bennett and panel. So now, we're gonna take this panel on the Governor's bill and people who are here to testify on that. Do you have people with you, Secretary, or do you come up by yourself?
I'm gonna come up by myself first, and then, under Secretary Quealy will come up. Good afternoon, Chairman Brownsberger and...
Secretary, can you pull it in a little bit?
Certainly. Good afternoon, Chairman Brownsberger and Chairman Cronin and members of the panel. I'm here in support of three pieces of legislation. Senate Bill 2158, updating laws relating to dangerous drugs and protecting witnesses. House Bill 3870, an act empowering law enforcement to cooperate with the United States to transfer custody of convicted criminals. And Senate Bill 2218, an act related to the admissibility of evidence in a prosecution for operating under the influence. Under Secretary Quealy will testify on the 2218. Before I became Secretary of Public Safety, I was a prosecutor in a gang unit in Suffolk County. I was a prosecutor in Lowell. I was a prosecutor in Middlesex County, where I prosecuted homicides, and I was the senior trial counsel. And I was the first assistant in Worcester County, where I prosecuted murder cases. And I was a defense attorney for eight years. The first thing I'd like to testify about is, basically, about putting the drugs on the federal drug scheduling. This is frankly the most important thing of all the parts of the Governor's bill. And it's there for a very specific reason. There's no way the legislature and the governor can keep up with the drugs, the way the chemists and the Chinese laboratories are changing fentanyl all around. You just can't do it. Fentanyl has a different compound. It has twenty-two carbon atoms, twenty-eight hydrogen, two nitrogen, and one oxygen. We've already seen when carfentanil came into the state, it's not illegal. You could sell it, and we sell it on the steps of the, of the State House, and the state police couldn't even arrest you for it. Already acetalfentanil, furantfentanil, butylfentanil, omfentanil, and methylfentanil are in the state of Massachusetts. The state police can't even arrest you. There's no way the legislature and governor, no matter how hard you work, can keep up with it. They're just gonna keep changing it. All you have to do is change one carbon atom, one nitrogen atom, one, one of the, change out the oxygen atom, and they just can sell it. You can't keep up with it. If you don't allow it to be on federal scheduling, anybody can go out, make it, and just kill thousands of people. So, it doesn't matter. You can come back through carbon, you can come back through carfentanil. We're doing the right thing with that, but right now, they can just move it around and start killing more people. So, you gotta put it on federal scheduling, no matter what. The second thing is drug distribution causing death. I'll be as fast as possible. Okay. Drug distribution causing death. The simple fact is, we're trying to make it the same way as you make operating under the influence of alcohol recklessly when you drive, drive into somebody and kill them. I understand what the concern is here, that somebody who is also an addict is selling a small quantity of drugs or sharing the drugs. That's something that you have to be concerned about, and is within the discretion of the DA's office. But also, someone who's leaving a wedding or a party and drinking and driving also gets five years if they do the same thing. And that's under the discretion, and I'm not excusing that either. But someone who is trafficking in heroin and selling it shouldn't be in a position where they don't have the same penalty as someone who's drinking and driving. They're killing a thousand people a year, and yet you can't sentence them to a minimum mandatory, and that's what that's about. Witness intimidation. It just was a mistake when they drafted, I'm sure, when they drafted this statute. I would be more concerned if someone threatened to kill my family members than threatened to kill me, and that's not a joke. I had someone who was unhappy with my decision about sending them to a certain amount of time in jail when I was first assistant in Worcester County. They hired a Latin king to kill me. I was a lot more concerned the Latin king was gonna show up at my house and kill one of my kids or my wife than I was concerned about they were gonna blast me in the parking lot. Witness intimidation doesn't cover that right now, alright? It doesn't cover the situation where they threaten your family. You gotta change that statute, or it's gonna intimidate people more than the statute that we have now. Further, the witness intimidation statute doesn't cover people when they, once they leave the courthouse. It only covers people before they testify. It's an important change that we need to make within that statute, and also it allows the DA's offices to pay for the transfer and movement of witnesses after they testify. And that's an important factor. I had plenty of witnesses that didn't know that they should be transferred until after they testified, because that's when the real fear took over. They had testified, and then the pressure took over. Then they were called rats. Then their family got in trouble. And that's where the statute needs to be changed. The final part on that, the Governor's issues there, is solicitation of murder. And just to go back to what I said about the Latin kings and when I was in Worcester. Under the state law, that, that's a misdemeanor, when you try to hire somebody. And they had to go get the feds to indict the guy. It shouldn't be that way. It should be a felony if you're going out there to hire somebody to do something, something like that, solicitation. And we need to have a statute that can be prosecuted in the state court. We shouldn't have to go every time to get somebody in, in the federal court. We shouldn't have to rely on the US Attorney's Office every time. That's just, makes common sense that our DA's and our Attorney General should be able to do that. The last thing is, and I'm trying to go as fast as I can, is on our ICE bill. What that is, is the LUN decision, the SJC came back, they applied our law in our state and said that it was unconstitutional, the way we were adopting that statute, and that the legislature had to make that change. I understand that. What the Governor came back and did was try to put it on a footing that was equal to the way we were enforcing it under the Obama administration. It even made it a little more restrictive, and instead of forty-eight hours, it put it under twelve hours. The idea of it is, is to make sure that if someone's committed a serious felony in the past and they're under arrest, alright, if they've, if they've been arrested before for drug trafficking and convicted, if they've been arrested before for rape, if they've been arrested before for assault and battery, dangerous weapon, they don't have to be released before ICE shows up. It's twelve hours that they're gonna be held. That, that's it. And that's all they're trying to do. You don't wanna let someone go. If they've had that serious charge, they're under arrest, or they're in the court system, and you wanna have that amount of time to hold them for ICE. No one who hasn't been convicted of a serious crime should be held. It's only those individuals that have been convicted of a serious crime, and it's not trying to take it forward to anything that's happening now within the federal government. It's taking it back to where it was back before. It's, if anything, it's more restrictive than we had it two years ago, when this, when this administration was working, when Governor Baker had it under the state police. It leaves it to every local authority to decide whether they want to do it. It's not forcing any city or town to adopt this. If they don't wanna hold anybody, they don't have to do it. I tried to be as fast as I can, Chairman and Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Brownsberger. Other questions from members of the panel?
Thanks, Mrs. Secretary. I have a question for you, actually, relative to the last issue that you talked about, the ICE issue. So, as a practical matter, I'd like to understand, if ICE has an administrative warrant for a, what they believe to be dangerous criminal, in Massachusetts...
No one who hasn't been convicted of a serious crime should be held. It's only those individuals that have been convicted of a serious crime. And it's not trying to take it forward to anything that's happening now within the federal government. It's taking it back to where it was back before. If anything, it's more restrictive than we had it two years ago when this administration was working, when Governor Baker had it under the state police. It leaves it to every local authority to decide whether they want to do it. It's not forcing any city or town to adopt this. If they don't want to hold anybody, they don't have to do it. I tried to be as fast as I can, Chairman and Chairwoman.
Thank you, Chairman Brownsberger. Other questions from members of the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. I have a question for you actually relative to the last issue that you talked about the ICE issue. So as a practical matter, I'd like to understand, if ICE has an administrative warrant for a dangerous criminal in Massachusetts, doesn't honor there the warrant, what ends up happening as a practical matter? What happens next?
Well, they either wait outside the police station for them or outside the courthouse or outside the jail and then they chase them down. Or they get away and they don't show up. So you've had situations here where they waited outside the courthouse, there's been a running chase, there's a danger that someone out in the street could get hurt by accident or the individual who unfortunately wasn't held in a safe environment has ICE trying to put them in handcuffs in the middle of the street. So there's a danger in a couple ways. It could be the individual they're trying to put in custody. It could be to the ICE agent or it could be to some innocent bystander. Or they could get away without ever...if they're a dangerous felon would be a very concerning incident.
Just a quick...any other questions? A quick question. Have you heard from some folks who have concerns about usually local schedules as they guide? What about the local model, but it would be you or the Secretary of the Cushing College or somebody like that that would be scheduling?
I'm really concerned. It took me a couple hours to research coming up with this, how many times we had to switch nitrogen and doing the background and understanding what it was, how we'd administer that. They have the system set up with the federal government. And how the mechanism would be for the state government to do that as compared to the federal government that already has it set up to do and work in that manner? I'd be concerned about starting a whole new process under the state government. Senator, you know what it reminds me of? It really reminds me of when cars came in to replace horse and buggies. All of a sudden, you needed a set of rules that had never been anticipated before. And that's, I think, what's going on. We have people with good motives, good hearts, who are trying to make us all safe in the manner we've been made safe in the past. But the whole game's been changed with these labs that can just move faster than we can. And that's what's happening right now.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Chairman, Senator. Thank you very much.
Now, is there another group coming up together on this group of issues? District Attorney Morrissey, is that the Secretary Quillie here or the Secretary Greg?
Chairman, I have two people on my panel with me. It's separate.
I'm going to be quick, so stay right there.
Why don't you come on up to the panel and get on the deck here and...
I'll sit.
I'll be very quick.
All right. We did give Secretary some extra time to kind of lay out the parameters.
I'll be quick.
If you're able to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Chairman, members of the committee. Michael Morrissey, the Norfolk District Attorney on behalf of the District Attorneys Association as I am the President and no one else showed today because they got snowed in. So I'll make it very quickly. Secretary Bennett covered the federal drug aspect of what he was talking about. We are completely in favor because the feds are equipped to handle the problem. They're changing the formulas so quick. The only thing I would think and point out to you is that as well-meaning as we are in Beacon Hill and having spent 34 years and the good things that we do do, we're often very slow doing good work. And so trying to keep up with the formulas is really a difficult proposition for the legislature and should be done by an administrative body. We think the feds are much more equipped to do it and I completely agree. Carfentanil is the best example, not against the law, yet it's killing people. It can kill you by skin contact. So the district attorneys are in favor. As far as Senate 2158, the great majority of district attorneys are with the bills. All there are some reservations in different sections by some of my colleagues. But I'll be very quick and I'll submit written testimony. Witness intimidation. Danny Conley has been the leader of the district attorneys for many years on trying to protect people. And the Secretary is exactly right. Danny points out two problems, that the protection after 2006 really ends at the courthouse and not after the conviction when many of the family members are often subject to intimidation. And the youthful offenders should be included, 14- and 18-year-old youthful offenders should also be included. So the district attorneys are, I think, to a person in favor of the witness intimidation section. Compassionate release, I think we as a group are also generally in favor with a couple caveats. And I think you've done a pretty good job of carving out classifications of prisons that should not be included. But we also point out that we want to make sure that those people who are actually released will not present a subsequent danger to society and they don't have the ability to reoffend. That would be a criteria, as well as notification to the district attorney's office and the victims. We think that is equally as important. And solicitation to commit a felony, just very quickly, murder is the one that comes to mind, but when you have solicitation to commit a crime, we think there should be some relationship to the penalty, the underlying penalty of the crime and the solicitation. And murder is the best example. We had a case where someone was trying to kill a business partner and paid an informant to do that. The informant was obviously working for the police. Someone had come to the police, gets arrested and the charge obviously is solicitation to commit a murder and it's a misdemeanor, one year in the House of Corrections. That is a joke. And you are dealing with in the crime package, which we appreciate as well, but it would be important not to say something about it. Finally, death resulting in has created some debate amongst the district attorneys. We do and have had a number of prosecutions. Norfolk County lost 155 people to overdoses last year, 170 to the year before. Death resulting in is a strong statement by the Governor to New Hampshire does it. But as a practical matter, Secretary Bennett outlined some of the problems for you to consider. And the other problem is when we have a...we're trying to do a manslaughter case, the product is normally gone. If you have some really bad, strong product and it gets to the victim, the victim dies, the product's gone. That chain of custody for the product is very difficult for us to follow, which is why it makes it so hard to bring a manslaughter case. Usually you need a witness, you have to show the product, the chain of custody. It has been done few and far between. I think that the statement of someone drinking and getting a mandatory minimum and someone using drugs obviously is a good comparison, but it has, to be honest, created some debate amongst the district attorneys. Now, we do have some reservations, but we do applaud the fact that it's been filed. That's all I have to say. Written testimony will be submitted by some of my colleagues and thank you for taking me out of turn.
Mr. District Attorney, thanks so much. Other members have questions? Thank you for all of you. Undersecretary Quillie, and you have...
Thank you.
Thank you Chairman Brownsberger. Good afternoon Chairman Brownsberger.
Sorry, just checking something behind you. Go ahead, please.
Okay. Good afternoon Chairman Brownsberger, Chairwoman Cronin, and members of the Joint Committee on the Judiciary. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today in support of the Governor's legislation, Senate Bill 2218, an act relative to the admissibility of evidence in a prosecution for operating under the influence. My name is Jennifer Quillie and I'm the Undersecretary for Law Enforcement at the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. Prior to joining EOPS in 2015, I was a prosecutor and spent most of my career in the criminal courtrooms of the Commonwealth where I prosecuted cases ranging from operating under the influence to manslaughter. The legislation that I am testifying in support of today provides uniform standards for the admissibility of the horizontal gaze nystagmus eye test, or the HGN, in OUI prosecutions. HGN is both scientifically and nationally recognized as a reliable indicator of intoxication levels. It is part of the validated standard field sobriety tests used by law enforcement in Massachusetts and throughout the country. However, the current state of the law in Massachusetts requires prosecutors to scientifically establish the validity of each test in each and every case in order to introduce it as evidence. These gaps lead to unnecessary, inefficient, and unjust outcomes in prosecutions. The HGN test is widely recognized as the most predictive of these tests. Its use by trained police officers has been recognized as a quote "scientifically valid and reliable tool" by the American Optometrist Association. Nystagmus is the involuntary jerking of the eye that occurs when a subject is impaired by alcohol, inhalants, PCP, or central nervous depressions such as Valium or Xanax. Studies have revealed a direct linear relationship between blood alcohol concentration and the point where the nystagmus starts. HGN is not just an indicator of impairment, it is impairment. Nystagmus impairs the eye's ability to track a moving object. Thus, drivers with pronounced nystagmus have been proven to observe significantly fewer traffic aspects than drivers without nystagmus. In much of the country, the results of this test are being admitted against impaired drivers at trial. Massachusetts police officers are currently trained to use the HGN test and routinely employ it in making roadside assessments to inform their arrest decisions. The test is admitted in pretrial proceedings when officers are required to articulate the basis for their probable cause decisions to arrest. However, despite its high degree of reliability and ease of administration, the HGN test is virtually never admitted at trial in Massachusetts courts. The Massachusetts SJC concluded, quote, "that the HGN test relies on an underlying scientific proposition and therefore expert testimony is required." As a practical matter, the requirement that the Commonwealth produce an expert witness to testify to the underlying scientific basis for nystagmus makes the HGN test functionally inadmissible because such expert witnesses, such as ophthalmologists, are rare and very expensive. And I am almost finished. As a result, the holding places the Commonwealth at a severe disadvantage in sus prosecutions and withholds a critical piece of evidence for determining a suspect's impairment while operating a vehicle. This legislation would allow judges and juries to routinely evaluate the HGN results as they weigh the evidence in an OUI case. As crashes and fatalities involving OUI are on the increase in Massachusetts, it's important that we do everything we can to keep drivers, pedestrians, bicyclists, and all road users safe. Assuring that juries have the opportunity to consider the results of the most accurate of the standard field sobriety tests is critically important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Your panelists also should testify.
Good afternoon Chairman Brownsberger, Chairman Cronin, members of the Joint Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today also in support of Senate Bill 2218, an act relative to the admissibility of evidence in a prosecution for operating under the influence. I'm Jeff Larson. I'm the Director of Highway Safety for the Commonwealth within EOPS and the Office of Branson Research. Before I took this position, I was also the President of Safe Roads Alliance, which was dedicated to making sure that the roads in Massachusetts are safe for everyone, the drivers, pedestrians, passengers, bicyclists. One thing that's important to note, which Undersecretary Quillie noted, is that crash fatalities, not only in Massachusetts but across the country, are on the increase. They've spiked in a way that they haven't in 50 years in this country. OUI fatalities in 2016 increased 9% over the previous year and that's important because we're going in the wrong direction in terms of safety. The HGN test, as the Undersecretary noted, is one of the three standardized field sobriety tests that police officers employ to determine whether a driver's impaired. It's the most accurate of those tests. In the 1980s, in response to the devastation that was created by alcohol-impaired drivers on our nation's highways, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, NHTSA, sought to give police officers objective tools for assessing a driver's impairment. After extensive research, NHTSA created the standardized administration protocols and the scoring rubric into what is now called the SFST Battery and Training Protocol. Within this protocol, NHTSA research has found that the HGN test is the most reliable of the two other tests, the walk and turn and the one-leg stand. And both of those tests are accepted in courts in Massachusetts without the need for additional expert testimony. And it's that requirement for the expert testimony that makes this so hard because it's not done. While police are typically allowed to testify in OUI trials for the walk and turn and the one-leg stand, without that testimony, the test has been scientifically shown to be the most accurate representation. This legislation would allow officers to testify to their observations based upon their training and the underlying scientific validation and would allow judges and juries to consider this piece of evidence in their deliberation. We encourage you to pass this law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Time is up, Mr. President. Sir?
Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon Chairman Brownsberger, Chairwoman Cronin, and members of the Joint Committee on the Judiciary. Thank you for the opportunity today to testify in support of the Governor's legislation, Senate Bill 2218, an act relative to the admissibility of evidence in prosecution for operating under the influence. My name's Stephen May. I'm a retired police lieutenant. I have over 29 years of law enforcement experience. Currently, I'm the standardized field sobriety training coordinator for the Municipal Police Training Committee. I've been an active standardized field sobriety instructor since 1999 and I'm a certified drug recognition expert. I've been qualified as an expert witness in the horizontal gaze nystagmus test as early drug impaired and alcohol impaired driving in several district courts in Essex County. Over the course of my law enforcement career, I've been involved in approximately 1,000 arrests for operating under the influence of alcohol or drugs. I've administered the standardized field sobriety test, including horizontal gaze nystagmus, countless times. Over the course of my career, I've come to find firsthand that of all the standardized field sobriety tests and other indicators of impairment, the horizontal gaze nystagmus test is the most reliable test for alcohol impairment as well as impairment by certain other drugs. This test is routinely used by police officers throughout the country and has been for over 30 years. In order to administer the test, an officer informs the subject, "I'm now going to check your eyes," and then examines for the physical manifestations of intoxication. After some preliminary questions, the officer simply asks the subject to follow an object with his eyes, a pen or a pen light, while keeping his head still. The officer places the object, pen or a pen light, approximately 12 to 15 inches in front of the person's face and slightly above eye level. And then again, the officer just instructs the subject to fall with their eyes and keep their head still. The officer then asks the subject if they understand all the instructions. And after checking for signs of medical impairment, the officer looks for six clues, three in each eye, that indicate impairment from alcohol or certain other drugs. The clues that the officers are looking for are lack of smooth pursuit, distinct and sustained nystagmus of maximum deviation, and onset of nystagmus prior to a 45-degree angle. Standardized field sobriety testing is a required and fundamental part of basic police training at all levels and at all academies in Massachusetts. The program is standardized National Highway Traffic Safety Administration program, consists of 24 hours. A large part of the 24-hour standardized program consists of training in the administration interpretation of the horizontal gaze nystagmus test. After approximately four hours of classroom training, student officers participate in two separate controlled drinking exercises in order to learn the proper procedure to administer the test and become familiar with the three standardized clues of impairment, again, lack of smooth pursuit, distinct and sustained nystagmus of maximum deviation, and onset of nystagmus prior to 45 degrees. It's been my experience since 1999 that officers are able to master this skill with little and no difficulty. Additionally, as part of the second controlled drinking workshop, student officers across the state participate in what I call a before and after drill. Each student officer is assigned a volunteer and they give the horizontal gaze nystagmus test and a breath test to verify that there's no horizontal gaze nystagmus and these people have no alcohol in their system. I'm almost finished. The volunteers then consume alcohol under the supervision of a standardized field sobriety instructor to a predetermined level of impairment or predetermined blood alcohol concentration. At the conclusion, the volunteers turn back over to the recruit officer and retest it. The recruit officer administers the horizontal gaze nystagmus test a second time and observes the distinctly different results compared to the first test.
Just one second. You heard it this time. How are you doing? Are you close to the program?
I'm almost done, sir. Yes, sir. This gives every officer trained in Massachusetts first-hand knowledge of the correlation between nystagmus and alcohol impairment. In addition, the officers have to conduct a certification exam one-on-one with the field sobriety instructor. However, despite the high degree of reliability and the ease of administration, the horizontal gaze nystagmus test is virtually never admitted at trial in courts in Massachusetts. It's critical that the officer be allowed to testify to all the signs of impairment that they're trained to look for. This legislation would change that. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Questions from members of the panel?
Chairman, I know it's a very busy day, so super quick question. Does this also apply to when the driving while intoxicated using marijuana? I know it could be testing. We have not got flying, but you always have been so archy-wise, familiar with the law and share, familiar with the outfit. But we are going to be trying to tackle the issue related to people driving around under vehicles with marijuana. Does this apply? Does this apply to that as well?
Well, it doesn't and doesn't. And I'll explain. Cannabis does not cause nystagmus horizontally. It won't cause lack of smooth pursuit. It won't cause distinct and sustained and maximum deviation. It won't cause onset prior. But if the officer sees other observable signs of impairment, for instance, in some of the other standardized field sobriety tests or in personal contact, the way they drove the car, it points them in another direction that could lead to cannabis. So if you rule out nystagmus and there's still impairment, cannabis would still be one of the potential impairing substances. So we definitely use it in that respect.
Thank you so much for bringing us to this. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Crowell, did you want to?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Members of the committee, I come before you to ask your support for an act relative to Odin Lloyd, a name unfortunately that all probably in the world at this point, particularly in Massachusetts and in Boston in the U.S., we are familiar with for the wrong reasons. I am also, my name is Andrew Cabal, in case I didn't say it. I represent the Fifth Suffolk, Port, Dorchester, Roxbury. It happens fortunately and unfortunately that this woman to my right, Ms. Ursula Ward, who is the mother of Odin Lloyd, lives down the street from me. I also have with me a lawyer, Doug Asher, who is a well-decorated attorney. I too, I am a former prosecutor. Albeit, this bill, unlike some of the ones you've heard so far, does not talk about the trial process, does not talk about the interests of professionals, as in ADAs or attorneys or lawyers or judges. It talks about the other people that are involved in the system that are there for no often because they didn't even want to be there, whether it's the victim, whether it's the witnesses, whether it's families and survivors, homicide in particular, whether it's the jurors, right? And the defendant often, of course, doesn't want to be there, right? So in this situation, you have a case that's beyond trial as well. We're talking about the appellate process, which is one of the fundamental rights that defendants have, like the right to counsel, right? Now, when we look at the trial process, particularly in homicide, the process is designed to kind of weigh the interests of all these different parties, right? Which is again why the defendant is given by constitution a lawyer, right? But now, when do we have in our system a situation where the juror, jury, which is the only place in our professional criminal justice system that common folk, regular folk, people, regular citizens, as it goes, jury of your peers, make us a decision, and the defendant then during the appeal makes, unfortunately, this situation, a tragic decision to kill himself? And I'm not being insensitive to this issue of suicide, which is very important to our society. I'm talking about, you know, a family like Ms. Ward go through what she went through, then for the defendant upon himself, a unilateral decision. And again, not to be insensitive to that particular issue, but to make a decision that takes away what the jury has said right away, right? And to put this woman through where she will tell you momentarily about her experience that we all saw, right? It's tragic what happened in this situation. But when the defendant shouldn't make a decision like that to take away the rights of the survivors to get that justice, as we often say, right? When your son is tragically murdered like this, you go through a public humiliation, and then boom, it disappears. It goes, as the process says, it goes to the beginning, as if it never even happened, as if he was not charged, as if it was not convicted, which is most important, right? So I see my time is up, and it's a busy day, so I'll let this woman, Ms. Ward, tell her story and why, I mean, for me, really but for her and that tragic story, this would not be in front of you today. So thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Ursula Ward. I am the mother of Odin Lloyd, who was murdered on June 17, 2013. Odin is my firstborn. He was a loving, giving man with a heart as big as the world. Odin played a huge role in...
Take all the time you need, man. All the time.
Odin played a huge role in the making of this machine, fine machine we call a family. He loved spending time with family and friends. Odin was looked up to by many. Since his murder, my family has not been the same. I now have grandchildren who will never get to know Odin. Under the abatement of initial, a conviction is not considered final until all appeals are exhausted. This doctrine vacate all criminal proceedings initiated against the defendant, including conviction. The man who killed my son was convicted of first-degree murder in 2015. In 2017, he died by suicide in prison. My friend called and told me to turn the news. There were a lot of emotion running through me. I didn't understand anything. I wonder where justice was. I received news from the Bristol District Attorney's Office that the 2015 conviction would be vacated and would have to go through trial for a decision. The conviction was vacated two weeks later. This news was devastating. I felt like I was burying my Odin again. I can't help but feel as if we were being punished. I deeply respect the justice system and trust in this process in seeking justice for Odin. Court proceedings after a homicide are a re-traumatizing experience for families. I buried my son, gone through trial, heard and seen tough evidence. I feel as if Odin has not been able to rest in peace, and I have not been able to properly grieve my son. I expected the journey through court to be a long one. I was prepared to commit my life to making sure that the person who killed Odin was held responsible. I was not prepared for this. A murder conviction, a murder conviction would not bring my Odin back, but it would offer me some peace. I urge you to report out favorably on H3835. Though I know this bill will not change anything for my son, it will support families after me so that no one has to deal with the re-traumatization of a vacated conviction upon suicidal death.
Thank you, Madam, for that beautiful testimony and for bringing us through. Are there questions from members of the panel? Thank you for being here. Do you also wish to testify, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman, and members. I'm Doug Sheff. I'm the past President of the Massachusetts Academy of Trial Attorneys, the past President of the Mass Bar Association, and the Massachusetts representative to the National Trial Bar. I'm also privileged and honored to represent Ursula Ward and her family in the wrongful death case against Aaron Hernandez's estate. We believe the entire antiquated law of abatement should be eliminated, but certainly, certainly in the case of suicide, abatement just should not apply. The criminal should simply not be able to decide whether his conviction stands, and almost all states agree. That's why only 12 remain that have this strict abatement rule. And we, the Commonwealth, are well-served to join the majority and become a leader on this issue and not a follower. Now Ursula Ward's wrongful death case highlights how bad criminal law can have a tremendous negative effect on civil law and for all of our society. Ordinarily, you see, a conviction in the murder case resolves the issue of fault in the civil case. Conviction allows us to avoid a retrial, and all that you heard with respect to her living through this, she's going to have to live through it again perhaps, because the suicide would trigger abatement, which triggers abatement in the criminal case, could have the following effects. First, victims like Ursula might have to go through a lengthy trial once again, what was it, four or five months, 470-odd exhibits at great expense, and she would have to relive those horrors in that first case a second time. The Commonwealth would have to pick up most of the tab for the second trial. That could be hundreds of thousands, maybe seven figures. And I think also forcing countless experts, detectives, and other witnesses to go through this thing all over again because of this antiquated, nonsensical abatement law. Moreover, abatement might actually prejudice the victims in the civil case, the second case, like Ursula Ward. Not only does the criminal get to remove the conviction, he possibly makes the second case much more difficult for the victim, because the criminal defendant could have been a very important witness in the case, and now he's gone. So not only does the criminal get to erase the conviction, he then gets to weaken the civil case with his final irresponsible act. And actually, seems like someone might have informed Mr. Hernandez that that was the case. You remember the note, "Now you're rich"? Think about it. Think about it. All this is patently unfair, and as wrongful death attorneys, we fortunately secured a final judgment before the suicide, which we believe will protect Ursula. But what about all the rest of the victims? She's here for the rest of the victims. She's the selfless woman who got up and said, "I forgive you," to her son's murderer. She's here for the good of the Commonwealth. They deserve, these victims deserve at least this baby step. And for all these reasons, and for Ursula and for justice, we urge you, please, to come out favorably on this bill, to pass this bill. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, yes, thank you. I have with me as well a letter of support from District Attorney of Bristol County, as well as a letter from Tina Sherry, who's the Director of the Lowest D round Priestesses, who I'm sure, I know you're dealing with in the neighborhood. So thank you for your attention.
So regarding the criminal justice related things, I've got Mass Cops, criminal police, Michael Pereira, Michael Talbot, and you may have been getting my guys up here and calling me, I believe, here in San Diego. What's on your mind?
There is a, if anybody's here for the hearing on the Tacky Chan bill about record-keeping for Asian-Americans, that bill is being heard in a different auditorium. At least one person was confused about that, so I'm just mentioning it. That's in the Gardner Auditorium. Sir?
Good afternoon, Chair Bronsberger and Chair Cronin and Committee. My name is Michael Pereira. I'm a police officer in Fall River, and I've been a police officer for 28 years. I represent the Massachusetts Coalition of Police, where the largest police union in Massachusetts. We have over 210 locals, and we represent over 4,000 members. We're here today to testify favorably for Senate Bill 2158 and ask for your support. We support the bill because it speeds up the way we classify illegal drugs smuggled into Massachusetts or manufactured into Massachusetts and would adopt the federal classification system. The bill will also establish enhanced penalties directly targeting people who cause death by dealing these drugs, increasing penalties for criminals who deal dangerous drugs killing our citizens. This bill will also enhance our witness intimidation laws to include retaliatory conduct, giving the state prosecutors tools to convict people who intimidate witnesses after they have cooperated with the police and testified for the Commonwealth. It will also make the crime to intimidate family members of witnesses. At the same time, the bill will ensure that witnesses and families will be eligible for assistance before and after they testify for the Commonwealth. And finally, the bill will provide a set of enhanced penalties for solicitation to commit felonies. Currently in Massachusetts, if you solicit someone to murder someone else, it's a misdemeanor. Other people have testified to this already today. But some of our neighboring states, it's up to a 30-year felony for doing the same crime. The bill will give the prosecutors and the district attorneys another tool to effectively prosecute for the most dangerous people in our Commonwealth. This bill hits home here because I work in Fall River. I've been a police officer for many years there, and we see this every single day in Fall River. We see people dying of opiates. It's, you know, Representative Fio, she left the room, but she worked very hard to help us with the opiate problem in Fall River and getting our can for police officers, things of that nature. But it's not only children dying. We say it all the time, these drugs, people are given it, and kids are dying of a heroin overdose. But just to tell a quick story, and then I'll move on to the rest of the panel. I went to a call not too long ago, and it was a woman who was, she had OD'd on heroin, and we administered knock-in, it didn't work, to paramedics, and instead intervenously intervened knock-in, and we worked on it for quite some time, and she ended up passing away for that overdose. So then, I was the police officer at the scene, I'm doing a report, I'm speaking to a family member, and this wasn't a 22-year-old street person or someone that you would commonly think would die of opiates. It was a 56-year-old woman, who was a decent woman, who just somehow got hooked on heroin and died. So this bill will give us tools to prosecute these people who are bringing in these drugs, and that's what we're looking for, that support, to help us with the tools. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Bronsberger, Chairman Cronin, members of the board. My name's Michael Talbot. I'm a sergeant detective with the Boston Police. I am the Vice President of the Superior Detectives in Boston. I'm also the representative for the Massachusetts Fraternal Order of Police. I'm here on behalf of Fraternal Order of Police and the Boston Detectives to express our support for Senate Bill 2158, which the Governor brought forward. I won't reiterate all the points that my brother had mentioned, but the fact of the matter is this bill saves lives, and it's important that we get it out there. First of all, it saves lives by identification, appropriate identification of the illegal substance. It saves lives by being able to hold someone accountable for these tremendous debts that are occurring in our neighborhoods. It allows us to protect the witnesses that we interview, we bring to court every day, and it protects ourselves. Mr. Bronsberger, when you were Attorney General, as you're aware, you know, we had threats against me for testifying in a trial. We had threats against the intimidation of the family and household members. This hits home on everything. It saves lives, and on behalf of our organization, we ask that you go forward with that bill and support it. Additionally, on behalf of the Fraternal Order of Police, I'd like to show support for House Bill 3835. Ms. Lloyd was here, she just testified. We are a strong supporter of that. We believe that that's true and just to the victims of these horrendous crimes. Additionally, we are in support of House Bill 3870 and Senate Bill 2218, which earlier they mentioned is the transfer to federal custody for those who commit serious offenses, as well as an increase in the OUI penalties. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairwoman, members of the committee. My name is Quincy Police Chief Paul Keenan. I've been a Quincy police officer for 35 years in the city of Quincy, and I'm here today to speak in favor of the Governor's Criminal Justice Bill, specifically the classification of controlled substances. The present practice we enjoy today is costly and redundant. When new drugs enter the Commonwealth, it takes time for the law to catch up. The proposed legislation would expedite the classification process. Until the legislature amends the law to reference the new drug and assign it to one of the five classes, the new drug is not a controlled substance at all. People dealing with these drugs face no consequences. This legislation provides that any drug that is added to the various schedules of the Controlled Substance Act by the federal government will automatically be considered a controlled substance under the Massachusetts law. The federal government traditionally responds faster to dangerous new drugs than our state, and that's not a criticism of our state, it's just a reality. New drugs will be assigned to one of the five classes of controlled substances under our our laws in accordance with the five schedules provided under the federal regulations. This would allow for quicker identification of illicit drugs, allowing the drugs to become illegal sooner. The legislature would still retain the discretion to assign any new drug to a different class or to exempt any new drug from our controlled substance law altogether. This legislation, legislation will streamline the process and put police officers charged with enforcing drug laws on the curve, instead of always being behind the curve and trying to play catch-up. This legislation has real-life implications. Several years ago, my city experienced three serious overdoses within a very short period of time. We were able to trace the source of these overdoses back to the local smoke shop and determine that the store was selling what turned out to be a variety of spice. We seized the drugs and criminally charged the owner. However, the drugs were not yet classified in the state. The only option we had to hold that person accountable for his actions and to make him cease selling the illicit product was a city ordinance and a license violation, and that's really not acceptable. In conclusion, I support the proposed bill put forth by the governor, and I believe it saves lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Chief Patterson.
Just very briefly, Madam Chair, Mr. Chairman, Audible Committee members, I have some written testimony, I won't read it. I mean, much of what we're testifying for here today has been said already by Secretary Bennett and our DA Morrissey, and certainly Chief Keenan. I apologize for, Chief Frederickson was supposed to be here today on the panel, as well as Chief O'Terry from Plymouth, but the bad weather down south kept them abey. But in any event, we just, as far as the Mass Chiefs and the Mass major city chiefs, we fully support and endorse this bill for all the reasons that were mentioned here today. We think the four critical areas are long overdue to be addressed, and will certainly be available should the need develop moving forward to assist and help out in any way we can. Thank you.
Chief, thank you for your testimony. Back to Congress. The President, Mike Conley.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for coming in today and testifying on behalf of this piece of legislation. So, we all know the, about the epidemic that's ongoing. What kind of impact do you think having this legislation on the books will have in your effort to reduce the number of drug traffickers in our communities?
Well, I guess I'll start, I mean, you know, Chief Keenan just testified to one certainly critical issue of the bill regarding the federal classification system that we currently have, and then we have the Massachusetts class system. I think right now, today, if someone, and they'd mentioned it already during the testimony, but if someone is selling a particular, particularly new dangerous drug, and carfentanil was mentioned, we can't do anything about it. I mean, it's not against the law. In the federal, in the feds, they do classify these new drugs that are made in laboratories a lot quicker, and if we can have an automatic adoption system here in the Commonwealth for their federal classifications, usually it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, in a mass A, B, C, D, E, I think it'll be a lot quicker and more effective for us to combat the drug issue here in this Commonwealth.
Just a follow-up. So, what we have there is drug traffickers setting up shop in our communities, and they know they can't get arrested. I mean, that's basically what's going on. Is that fair to say?
That's essentially true. Usually, they're ahead of the curve. They research, they do their research, and a lot of times what we see is, a lot of parts of the country sees some of these drugs before we do. And the federal government is well-positioned to be able to identify what these drugs are even before they reach Massachusetts. So, a lot of these people know what the chemical compounds are, they tweak them just a little bit, and it makes them, it makes them lawful and legal.
From a public safety perspective, this bill should have been passed yesterday if we're really serious about shutting down the people who are literally killing our family members.
We believe so.
I agree.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments? Gentlemen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Got one more question, this is in this category, and then we're going to go to the Jim Brooks category. Laura Martin, Barbara from Quincy.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to come testify today, and I'd like to thank Secretary Bennett for welcoming me as well. Just as a bit of background, my name is Laura Martin. I'm currently the Substance Use Prevention Coordinator for Mayor Thomas Koch in the city of Quincy. I've been in that role for a little bit, over a year. Prior to that, I was a prosecutor in Norfolk County for seven years. I was in charge of the specialty courts, especially the drug court is kind of where I got my roots, and went from there. And lastly, and most importantly, I had a written speech, but I'm just, I've been hearing a lot, so I'm gonna go how I best go off the cuff. So, I'm the sister of a brother who passed away from a heroin overdose October 1st of 2004, so 13 years. And I am also the sister, a very proud sister of a brother in recovery from heroin addiction. So, I unfortunately and my family have watched the evolution of the opiate crisis, and I will tell you, in my current position, in my last position, and as a sister, as a family member, I'm petrified. As my brothers, when they first started, my brother, I often speak about how unfortunately, God, I'm not even doing good with time, but unfortunately, you know, my brother was your, they were the typical story that you hear of the suburban children that got hooked on opioids and then it went to heroin. And for a long time, I would tell that story, and I would say he was, you know, he died three days after he civilly committed himself. My other brother was in a civil commitment when my older brother passed away, and he died three days before he was supposed to start law school. And I used to tell people that, and now I don't, because that's part of the problem. It's the stigma of the illness and not talking about it and not doing proactive things. Representative, when you just said, shouldn't this have been done yesterday? Yes, and that's what I talk to the families every day that are burying their children. Why wasn't this done yesterday? I'm very fortunate, I have a strong family, we speak out. Addiction's not a choice. I was raised with the best morals, my parents are amazing. Me and my sister, my sister works for Boston Public Health, she runs their addiction programs on the outpatient basis. I'm a prosecutor and now an advocate for the city, and this wasn't a choice. We weren't raised for this, and it should be treated the same as any other illness that's not a choice. The Surgeon General said that, addiction is a disease, and we need to start treating it as such. It's unfortunate that it takes such advocacy and people speaking out with such hardship to come to this point, but I'm proud of those people because parents such as mine and myself speaking out, there was a lot of shame at the beginning, but that washed away because I know what my brother was, I know what my family is, and I know what we're gonna see down the line. Just a little bit more into the factual drug classification. When I was a prosecutor, we first saw fentanyl, and it was a horror story. Oh, my God, this new stuff. And then carfentanil. So, I've seen the progress, and it's very, very sad to note that, I apologize, may I just quickly finish? Now, as I'm working for the city and I'm looking at the statistics and I'm looking at death certificates, fentanyl's not new. Our death certificates in the city of Quincy going back to 2013 have a high presence of fentanyl. So, the drug dealers are ahead of us. They were smart, and this has been killing people for that long. So, I just think as far as that classification goes, I'd say it's a no-brainer, but not gonna put it so laissez-faire, but with what we deal with every day and getting ahead of it, I really think it's a very important thing, and I think it also shows the liability, and it reinforces that addiction is a disease. So, if there's a known, something known out there killing people afflicted with this disease, we have to hold them accountable. And just very briefly, if I may, ask, okay, shortly, as to the conviction and increasing that, I'm a sister of a substance user who's deceased and a current substance user in early recovery, and I equate alcoholism as a disease, opiate use as a disease. Now, if an alcoholic, because of their disease, gets in a car and kills someone, they're held accountable. I hate to say it, but if my loved ones chose, because of their addiction, to have to suffice monetarily, and they sold drugs and it killed someone, I would ask that they be held accountable despite their disease. So, I think it sends a very strong message, and I thank you all for the actions that are happening in the State House and all the advocacy, and I ask you to pass these bills. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Barb from Quincy. I'm a resident of Situate, Massachusetts, where I'm a member of South Shore Pure Recovery. And I'm here to testify in support of the Governor's Criminal Justice Bill. I lost my beautiful son, Dan, in 2014 to a fatal overdose. Dealers supplying or trafficking in fentanyl in any form are literally slaughtering men, women, and our children in the Commonwealth. They should be appropriately charged with the manslaughter they are committing, the lives they are taking, and the pain and the suffering they are causing so many of us left behind. I'm also involved with the grief support group that offers solace and companionship to those who have lost loved ones. I can tell you that the vast majority of our families have lost loved ones to drug overdoses, an increasing number traceable to fentanyl. The provision in the Governor's Bill to allow our state drug classification to link to the federal drug scheduling process will allow us to keep up with the myriad of new and dangerous synthetic drugs as they are identified by government scientists, so our police and prosecutors will be empowered to protect public safety. Carfentanil, the current lethal drug being distributed by dealers, will not be the last drug of death they peddle. We need to be ready to respond to the next round, unfortunately. My son, Dan, was a loving young man, a talented musician, with his life in front of him. A favorite song, "I'll Be Seeing You in All the Old Familiar Places," plays in my mind every time I drive around Boston. Many times, I have to pull over to dry my tears when I pass the places Dan and our family used to spend many happy hours. But I also see the street corners and other known places dealers lurk to peddle their poison. Let's pass the Governor's Criminal Justice Bill and send an equivocal message to those who distribute or traffic in fentanyl en masse, which is, it is they who will now pay the long, will now pay with long-term incarceration. Perhaps to some, it will be worth it, and we can achieve a significant goal, but for those who continue, we will have a special place reserved for them where they can do no further harm.
Thank you very much for all that you've brought to us. Representative Mike.
First of all, thank you so much, and sympathies to your folks. And I think the point that you made about, you know, we have to talk out about this, we have to speak out about this. I have a son who's 30 months into recovery, and I had an opportunity over the last five years to get to know a lot of, quote, as my son calls himself, junkies. And one of the things that these addicts tell me when I ask them, what's the most important thing that we can do? And the one thing that they all say is, put those drug dealers behind bars. And that's the one thing that they say repeatedly. They know they need treatment, they know they need to do that, but put those drug dealers who are selling this poison behind us. Thank you very much for your testimony there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. So, now we transition to a discussion of the Jim Brooks Stabilization Act. And I've got China Tyler, I see Mike Conley, I see Lydia Edwards, who's in the House. So, why don't we have you, like, officials come up who'd like to speak on this issue? Are there other officials who want to speak on this issue? And then we'll go to the list.
Is it okay if the Vice President of the Labor Council joins us up?
Sure.
No. No. We're good.
We're all together, yeah.
Yes, yeah, all right. Thank you, Chair Cronin and Chair Brownsberger for taking me at a turn, and to all the members for your attention on this matter. For the record, my name is China Tyler. I'm a state representative of the 7th Subway District, which includes Roxbury, Dorchester, Fenway, and the South End. And I'm here with strong support from our new city council, Lydia Edwards, who is also the chair of the Housing Committee for the City of Boston, my colleague Mike Conley from Cambridge in Somerville.
Yes, thank you.
And I'm just here because I wanted to share with you the importance of H4142, the Jim Brooks Stabilization Act. This bill is a very important tool we can use to prevent displacement while protecting the rights of tenants and providing support for residents facing displacement and homelessness. Right now, in the city of Boston, we are suffering through a serious housing crisis, and families are being evicted at a high rate with very minimal resources to rely on. It is critical that the Commonwealth provide necessary tools to combat displacement and help with stabilization of families in general. This bill will provide the tools necessary to notify tenants of their rights, and it is important that every tenant, regardless of their socioeconomic status, is aware of their rights as tenants. So, I hope that you guys will help us in support of this movement and report this bill favorably out of the committee, and if you have any questions, you guys know, you can always reach out to me, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Great stuff. Thank you, Representative Conley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, the members of the committee, Mike Conley from Cambridge in Somerville, and I'm proud to be a co-sponsor of the Jim Brooks Stabilization Act. You know, we hear a lot about the housing crisis, and if you actually look up the definition of crisis in public health terminology, I would suggest that crisis is too weak of a word. We're facing truly an emergency of displacement in our communities. And of course, this is a home rule petition that would apply to the city of Boston, but I really wanted to come to report to you that in Cambridge and Somerville, there is very serious interest in an Office of Housing Stability, which Councilor Edwards here at the table pioneered in Boston. We want to do some of these similar measures to try to introduce tools to stop and fight displacement and to give tenants who are facing eviction all of the information and all of the tools to defend their own rights and to try to find arrangements to prevent eviction and displacement in any case that we can. So, you know, certainly on the housing production side, I'm a strong proponent of things like the Great Neighborhoods legislation, and we know there's a lot that we can do in terms of housing production. But just this morning, on the Housing Committee, we heard from Professor Barry Bluestone, and I asked him about the difference between the urban core and the rest of sort of the greater Boston region. And Professor Bluestone indicated to us that in recent years, the large majority of multifamily housing is being produced in Boston, in Cambridge, in Somerville. So, our urban core, we are doing our part in terms of housing production. We need more tools to try to prevent displacement, and this legislation, with the support of the City Council in Boston, with the support of Mayor Walsh, I think it does a lot to create these new tools, and those of us in Cambridge, Somerville, and the rest of our communities, we can build off those tools and try to bring some of these best practices to our communities. So, I'm honored to be here with these colleagues, and I hope the committee will consider this very carefully and move it forward favorably. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Brownsberger and Chairwoman Cronin. My name is Lydia Edwards. I am the District City Councilor representing Charlestown East Boston in the North End. I'm also the chair of the Housing Committee for the City of Boston. As my, as Representative Conley had just stated, I had, previous to my current position, also been the Deputy Director of the Office of Housing Stability for the City of Boston, where we did actually work on the Jim Brooks Stabilization Act and worked with many of the many, many of the wonderful advocates who are here today, who will also testify in favor of this bill. I'm here specifically to testify about what we see regularly in Boston and why this bill is so very necessary. As, again, Representative Conley and Representative Tyler had noted, displacement is a huge issue in Boston. What we are seeing, despite huge amounts of building, is that people are still finding themselves being pushed out of the city that they love. And so, we need to take a several-pointed attack to displacement that includes the Jim Brooks Stabilization, that includes going after speculators, and that does include also building. We need to make sure that when we look at housing, we really see it for what it means. It is a future for many people. It is about social justice. Access to equity is a huge indicator of how you're gonna bridge the racial wealth gap. So, being able to stay, even if as a renter in the city of Boston that you love and work, is vital to your economic success as well. So, just to touch a little bit specifically on the bill, as many people, it's been mischaracterized as rent control, it's been mischaracterized as a gift to tenants. In reality, it is a practical, reasonable bill that allows us to know what is going on in the city of Boston as it is happening. We do get data, but it's usually a year late from the courts and after a lot of manpower, woman power going through all the data. What this would do is require landlords to file, if they're going to evict somebody, What this would do is require landlords to file, if they're going to evict somebody, a copy of a notice to quit, which is a notice to start the eviction policies, with the Office of Housing Stability. Then the office or the City of Boston will then respond with a packet of information, letting the tenants know, first of all, calm down. You would be amazed at how panicky people become when they get that notice, thinking they're going to be evicted. Number two, it would tell them about resources. If you're late on rent, what you can do. And finally, it would help them also provide for mediation services and just in general, let them know how they can navigate this process. The other thing that this does is make sure that people who are homeowners, who lose their homes in foreclosure, can negotiate fairly and reasonably with the bank, saying that if I have owned this home and paid your mortgage and now have lost this home, I do not need to become homeless. I can pay a reasonable rent to you, and I can stay in this building. This is a practical, reasonable bill that helps tenants and it helps former homeowners. Again, it's trying to prevent people from being pushed out of Boston. And so, and what is so key about this, and I see I have five seconds left, but the data is the number-one ways in which we can come up with truly effective legislation. We will know immediately who is evicting the majority of the people and for what the average amount of rents are, where in Boston, if they're speculating, if they're targeting communities. We will be able to find that out in real time versus a year after the fact. So then we can actually target and streamline in the most effective way legislation or responses. So I hope you will report this bill out favorably. I know that there'll be plenty of amazing testimony from our advocates, and I just wanted to thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you so much for allowing me to sit at this table with our incredible elected officials here. My name is Darlene Lavos. I'm the Vice President of the Greater Boston Labor Council. I bring you greetings from Blue Mandarini and Richard Rogers, our President and Executive Secretary of Treasury. So you know, the Greater Boston Labor Council passed unanimously in October 2015 to address evictions in Massachusetts, in Boston in particular. The Jim Brooks Stabilization Act is a response to what's taking place in every city across the country and here in Boston. Million-dollar condos and apartment complexes with $3,500 monthly rents are squeezing out our working-class families from the communities across the city. That means as well, over tens and hundreds of thousands of union members that are also getting pushed out of the City of Boston. I've certainly seen widespread gentrification in my neighborhood of Roxbury, along with other working-class communities of color where the trend is accelerating, like East Boston, Brighton, Matapan, and large pockets of Dorchester. I can't pretend to be the housing expert. I mean, all the folks here, they will have much more important data to share and stories that I'm sure you will be able to hear, but I do understand how power works. For many of us in the labor movement, we have had a front seat to the economic changes that have devastated the middle class and created an oligarchy in this country. I know how powerful the real estate industry is across the state and in Boston in particular. And I actually, the labor movement has been on the losing side sometimes on tenants' rights battles at the State House. But housing markets, just like economic markets, need government to intervene to provide protections that market forces are designed to ignore. The Jim Brooks Stabilization Act, H4142, is a great example of how labor, together with community allies, elected officials, and others, we can make Boston a better place for working-class families and for people who have been there for generations to come. So again, thank you for allowing me to speak today, and I really appreciate the work that you all have done for the labor movement and for the working-class movement as well.
Any questions? Hannah, I think you're listening.
Thank you very much. I'm trying to get, kind of figure this out. So it says, one of the folks who sent us some information on this said that you're going to encourage people not to pay their rent, or is that information wrong? I'm confused as to what the information is.
I can assure you that any bill that we would be proposing would not be encouraging people to break the law.
I didn't say break the law.
No, but I mean, telling them not to pay rent, right? And violating a lease, violating their lease and not paying rent, yes.
No, that's not, I didn't say anything about breaking the law.
So encouraging them to violate contracts that they have with their landlord. So no, it does not do that. I think what many people have said when I was in the Office of Housing Stability, and to this day, opponents have mischaracterized this bill as saying that the information the city will provide will somehow provide information about rent strikes and all of these silly things. The city will be very direct. Pay your rent is actually one of the things we would be advising people to do. Get resources and get help early on so that you don't face or find yourself in a courthouse and not having any resources to protect you. And that's where we found so many people at the Office of Housing Stability. They would come in the day before court, saying, I need help, and us trying to scramble resources together, when if they had come in four months ahead of time, we could have either transitioned them out, found another unit, or worked with the landlord.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Any other questions for Ms. Hannah? Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony. Now, we'll do something, I notice a lot of people here, and what often happens in the situation, if you're a drunk person, I'm looking around the room, I see about, maybe about five to six, eight hours of testimony here, if everybody has a talk. So I would like to just give people who are here the opportunity to identify themselves as being here in support or opposition to this bill by standing. So first, I'm going to ask those who are here to express support for the Jim Brooks Stabilization Act, stand up, just raise your hand so we can see. Okay, all right, so duly noted, there are a number of people here in support. I see the T-shirts, I see the hands. I can't quite exactly get a count, but thank you for rising. And if I don't know, maybe you can say on the other side, if people want to express, how many people are here to express opposition to the Jim Brooks Stabilization Act? Rise, raise your hands. Okay. All right, so there's also a number of people opposed. So we've got strong contentious forming acts, perhaps a few more present here today who would support. Duly recognized, we are now going to go through the equal access and testimony order on this bill, but if you have to go, we'll know that your basic position is registered. So I've got, skip the small things at the top of the list. Skip that to the list.
Good afternoon. My name is Jin Ouyang, a living at Austin. I'm a mother of four children. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to express my concern on House Bill 4142. I have come here to urge you to vote no on House Bill 4142, the Jim Brooks Stabilization Act. Over 20 years ago, Massachusetts outlawed rent control, which has helped both tenants and owners. This free market has encouraged more owners to rent, which means there is a great supply of apartments available for rent, which means more choices for tenants to shop for the best apartment. Boston is now trying to turn back the clock and bring back rent control. Do not be fooled by this legislation, thinking it is just for reporting rent increases and evictions. This is just a ploy. The goal is clear: freeze rent prices and bring back rent control through intimidation. Punish any landlord that tries to increase rent by notifying tenants not to pay, to boycott, to protest, all that at the expense of homeowners. Even a single person renting out their own homes would get affected by this bill. If you doubt this, ask yourself a simple question: Why must notices only be given when rent increases or there is an eviction? And yet, no notice is needed if your rent decreases or your apartment becomes available? If the city truly wanted to help people find affordable apartments, they could clearly want to know when new apartments are available for all rent drop. And yet, here we have the opposite. All they wanted to know is when the rent increases, since the goal is to stop all increases. That is rent control, clear and plain and simple. I urge you once again to vote no on this short-sighted bill. Do not turn back the clock and do not punish all owners who rent their homes to make ends need, to put their children through school, to help with medical bills, and to pay for retirement. Please vote no. Thank you so much.
I'm going to try and keep us away from expressions of emotional support. We've given the opportunity to rise and signal where you're at, if it's not a vote that you want to bring this up, and so forth, just as a table. Let's go to Charlie Hu now. Charlie Hu?
I own property in Boston area. I'm against the House Bill 4142 for two simple reasons. One is the bill actually tried to control the rent, but it will cause the, some homeowners, the landlord, they cannot get their rent, and so that they are short of the capital to make improvement, to do some basic maintenance. And some homeowners maybe get off the rental market, and that actually thinned the rental market and eventually actually caused the rent to rise. So that's one reason. Another reason, I think it's a basic value system that the tenants, the tenants get the service to rent the house from the landlord, and they have responsibility to pay. So for some reason, the bill actually encouraged if tenants don't pay and their responsible rent, they can actually break the basic value system. That's in my opinion. I had, a few years ago, I had a very bad story. One of my tenants, they didn't pay for a month, and I sent an eviction notice to them, and then they started breaking things up, like destroy the toilet and called the City Health Department. And then I, upon the request from the City Health Department, I repaired whatever they asked me to repair. The second day, they break it again. So I think that's two major reasons I'm against this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next pack, I've got a group of three, a side, a four, a side, we've got Lisa Owens,
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Owens, and I'm the Executive Director of City Life, Peter Urbana. We are a 45-year-old housing rights organization, community-based. We're based in Boston, but we have members in the greater Boston area. And we serve low- and moderate-income renters, homeowners, and small landlords. So I want to just talk to you about why we are in support of the Jim Brooks Stabilization Act. So our organization's weekly resident meetings attract over 100 people each week. And so these are folks who come to us because they're afraid of being pushed out of their homes, and they have been given the runaround by lots and lots of places. And they come to us with a lot of shame, a lot of fear, and no hope. These folks come to us largely because one of our volunteers have knocked on their doors and have asked them some very basic questions. Are you afraid of being pushed out of your home? Have you received an eviction notice? Do you know what this means? And through these very simple conversations, people begin to learn that as residents, they have rights, and they come to our weekly meetings. And, yeah, so through these meetings, we were able to serve about 600 households, mostly in the City of Boston each year. So once our families learn about their rights, we connect them with legal services, and we have some of our legal service partners here in the room today. So when they are connected to legal services and when they know their rights and they know how to support each other, what we find is that the overwhelming majority are stabilized, either in their homes, because they've been able to negotiate with their landlord, or they're able to be relocated, but in a way that doesn't destabilize their family. And they do that both with assistance from housing justice groups and with the assistance of the Office of Housing Stability, which, as Lydia Edwards testified, deals with hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of terrified families. So City Life is a member of the Right to Remain Coalition, which is a coalition of 40-plus housing advocates in the City of Boston. And we just wanted to let you know that the Jim Brooks Act notifies tenants who are facing eviction of their rights. It gives the City of Boston a way to collect data on eviction so that they can create programs and policies to support the stabilization of tenants and families most in need. And it supports the stability of former homeowners who have lost their home to foreclosure. This supports both these families and the surrounding neighborhood that these homes, these foreclosed homes would part in. So I want to thank you for your time, and we hope that you will report our favorably on the Jim Brooks Act. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, guys. I'm Alex. I'm a community organizer in Jamaica Plain. And so I'm the person that, you know, takes in all the new cases that come into our organization, and I find out what exactly that they're dealing with, and I help them out. So I wanted to talk about two things that I think is most important about the Jim Brooks Stabilization Act. And the first is the data collection. As an organizer, I think it's really important that we know just the full extent of the problem so we can allocate our resources in the best way. And right now, we do have some data, like mentioned earlier, from the courts, but we know that that data only, you know, the eviction process is long, and once it gets to the courts, it's at the very end. There's a bunch of people that leave before that. They get the notice to quit, and they leave, and then we never find out about those people, and that data doesn't get to the courts. So with the Jim Brooks Stabilization Act, we'd be able to really know how many people are being displaced, not just the people that make it to the court. And the second point I wanted to bring up is that this is just really giving people information about the rights that they already have. So it's not extending rights, it's just letting them know what they already have. So I feel like opponents to the Jim Brooks Stabilization Act are really saying, we don't want people to know their rights. Because it's just the dynamics of a landlord and a tenant. The landlord has the power, and the more the tenant knows their rights, the more power they have. And landlords are saying, oh, we don't want that. And another thing I wanted just to make clear is that this is only going to affect large landlords, people that own over six units. So the typical mom-and-pops that has a home that rents out the first floor is not going to be affected by this. So that's just another point that I wanted to make clear.
Thank you very much.
My name is Antonio Ennis, and I'm a community organizer as well at City Life. And I'm also speaking from a homeowner in Dorchester that holds foreclosure. This bill would actually help a lot of homeowners. would actually help a lot of homeowners after foreclosure, such as myself, and being able to keep my tenants in my building. I offer affordable rent in my, in my unit, and I have one of my tenants here today. And this would actually just really help homeowners instead of falling into foreclosure.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes, hello, everybody. My name is Rama Oremi. I'm also an organizer with City Life. And I am one who, I'm very concerned about how things go in our city. Too many times, I meet family members who basically are desperate. Imagine, some of them, due to the lack of education, or the tight knit of a family, they basically, they can, they basically, they're working so hard just to make ends meet. So having a summons, a notice to quit, something they don't understand, also I need to explain the language, how it also is hurting them. I'm, I'm Haitian American, so I see a lot of Haitians facing that. They've seen that note, they don't know what it says, they don't want to go to court, they're afraid, they just, they choose to move out. Ultimately, they do that because they don't know they do have any rights, because we come from a country, most people don't ever know they have rights. So when, when these things happen, you know, it becomes some kind of handicap on our community. Everybody who wants to stay there no longer have the luxury to stay, because we facing, or we, we feeling, we're being driven out. And when we, the world of this city belongs to all of us, why can't we stay? Why can't we build the community instead of destroying it? So that's what we say. When we find a family who's being evicted to no fault, or a family who's going to shelter, or a family who's basically in the street, what do we say? We do have the moral authority to pass this law, to make sure the family gets to stay home. Because if we look at it, it's about the family.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the panel?
We have actually one more person on the panel. Sorry. Sorry about that.
Sorry. Thank you very much for having me. Thank you. My name is Betty Lowe, and I'm a resident of Metford, Massachusetts. I work in Boston, and I'm a lifelong resident of the Commonwealth. I was made aware of this hearing today thanks to Right to the City Boston, and I would like to testify in solidarity with the Right to Remain movement. I am fortunate enough now to live in a house that my family owns, but when we were living in Boston, as a recent immigrant family in the late 80s and the early 90s, this was by no means a foregone conclusion for us. We too were displaced in the city for financial reasons, but we're just lucky enough to have found a way out. Under this current climate, however, in 2018, I am not sure a family like mine would have been able to climb through, to pull through the way we did, to climb from working class to middle class, to have enjoyed that opportunity. In the decades that have passed since, I have seen dramatic increases around metro Boston in the cost of living, in markers of economic inequality, and in the pressures our most vulnerable neighbors face. It is not right to me that opportunity and dignity for the poor have continuously been taken away, under such misguided notions that having personal wealth means having a greater moral standing, that discrimination doesn't undermine our ideals of meritocratic economy, and that the most privileged necessarily know what's best for the most vulnerable. Under this regime, I don't know that my family would have had a chance, would have had the same opportunities that I enjoyed in my life. I spoke of my experience just now, because we had the chance to get free from the threats of eviction and homelessness. And I want to do what I can to extend the freedoms that I have enjoyed in my life. As Toni Morrison once said, "The purpose of freedom is to free others." I am here today to speak strongly in support of the Jim Brooks Community Stabilization Act. It has been said that you should be the change that you wish to see. The logical extension of that is to take a stand for and to help the society that you want to live in. Having seen the passage of this act at Boston City Hall several months ago, and heard powerful testimony in support of it, I believe this legislation is key to stanching the loss of low-income neighborhoods, and will go a long way to supporting a more just and equitable society. That is the world I hope to live in, and I hope you will join me in taking this stand. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're Betty Lowe, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Questions from the panel? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kate Brady coming up. And just so people know, and this is going to identify the next person after this person, just so people know, who's coming up next. So Shlomo Pinkes will be the next, next witness after Kate Brady. After, Miss Kate, you're on deck. I got to, I got to let people know who's on deck. You have to be sitting, I don't want to say on deck. Perfect. So Kate Brady.
Yes, thank you.
Speaker from the city of Boston?
Correct. Good afternoon, Chairman Brownsberg, Chairman Kromen, and members of the committee. My name is Kate Brady from the Mayor of Boston's Office of Housing Stability. On behalf of Mayor Walsh, I'm here to testify in support of the Jim Brooks Stabilization Act, sponsored by Representative China Tyler. The Jim Brooks Stabilization Act is a homeroom petition that is one of several pieces of legislation supported by Mayor Walsh to address displacement of residents from their homes, a significant problem not only in Boston, but across the Commonwealth as a whole. The purpose of this legislation is to provide housing stability by reducing the number of evictions of tenants and former homeowners and foreclosed properties, by ensuring that they are informed of their basic rights and provided with access to resources that can help them obtain assistance. The legislation will also provide the city with timely data on the nature and location of evictions, to enable us to better target our outreach, education, and resources to prevent eviction and homelessness. This bill has two major components. It requires landlords who are serving tenants with a notice to quit, non-renewal notice, or expiration of a lease, to also provide the tenant with a city rights notice, and to provide written notice of the non-renewal or expiration to our office, the Office of Housing Stability, through a city termination notice. And second, it provides just cause eviction prevention protections for homeowners and foreclosed properties. The city rights notice must be provided to the tenant at the same time that the landlord or foreclosing owner serves a notice to quit, or other notice of lease non-renewal or termination. In the case of a lease non-renewal or expiration, the landlord or foreclosing owner must provide the tenant or former homeowner with a city rights notice and a city termination notice at least 30 days before initiating summary process. Copies would also be required to the court. A landlord or foreclosing owner who fails to provide that notice to the tenant or the city termination notice would not be allowed to recover possession of the housing unit without having done so. With regard to former homeowners occupying a foreclosed property, the legislation prohibits the foreclosing owner from evicting the homeowner unless the owner is seeking to recover possession for his or her own use in occupancy, or that of a family member, or if the former homeowner has failed to pay a reasonable rent. This legislation exempts subsidized properties that have other regulations governing occupancy or evictions, and it also exempts properties owned by Massachusetts residents who own six or fewer rental units. The Jim Brooks Stabilization Act is an important tool in combating displacement and reducing the trauma of evictions. In closing, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to this issue, and I ask that you favorably report out House Bill 4142, and I'm happy to answer any questions on behalf of the Office of Housing Stability in the city of Boston.
I thank you for that testimony. We appreciate it. Any questions from the panel? Already said that I would enjoy representing the great mom at House. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
On deck tomorrow, comes up next. So the next person, so they know, the next on-deck person is going to be Holland Jack or right now Shlomo.
Can I ask a question? Well, I wrote down, we have a panel from the Small Property Owners Association, and if some of us could speak now, but that's up to you, if you'd like.
I'm going to allow it. You hear us panel, you, you have a, do you also sign up?
Yes, they signed up. They all signed up.
Okay, current.
You want to come up? All right. So my name is Shlomo Pinkes. I'm a landlord.
Two and two?
Two more?
Well, I'm going to call you, if you're, if you want to panel, I'm calling, if you're multiple, I'm going to call you in a little circle. Where's the panel?
Thanks for hearing us today. I want to ask a very simple question of you, and that is, how many tenants give notice to their landlords on any given day that they're planning to move? Could it be five a day? Could it be five an hour? It happens all the time. The landlords are not coming here to complain about a potential vacancy that they will What you've got here is the tenants taking one side of the bargain. There's an equal bargain here between landlords and tenants. Either the lease will end, or it's been an oral agreement for many years or decades. I have tenants that I've had for decades. And they're turning this into a much larger issue. Years ago, I was on the Brookline Rent Control Board, and that law 50 years ago was written as a rent control and eviction regulation. Half of the whole law was about evictions, half of it. And here are the people today coming to you, people who came from La Vida Urbana, who have nearly a $1 million budget, who have meetings every week, and all they can do is tell you that there's a high rate of X. Where are the numbers? They've been around 40 years. You have a housing stabilization board from the city of Boston, probably a survivor from rent control from 25 years ago. I don't know how many years it's been there. Where are the numbers? They have a multimillion-dollar budget in City Hall. Where's their, where are their numbers? You have no data in front of you. Data. The, the way this regulation is written is seven, if someone who owns seven units or more. The problem is, people don't individually own property. But you could have it, you could be an owner of a two-family house where you have one tenant, but if you don't own it individually, if you own it in an LLC, a trust, or some other vehicle, you could find yourself under rent control. And this is specifically written this way. They could have said, how many units do you own through an LLC, a total of different vehicles? They don't say that. Unless you, and people do not own property individually, because if the mailman falls on your front stairs, or today, the shoveling problem, and shoveling costs a lot of money. But this is specifically written to hook in a three-family homeowner, especially if they're elderly, they won't know where they're, whether they're coming or going. Lastly, I, I just want to say, the tea was wonderful today. We've had some bad, bad problems over the years. They were wonderful today, and you have some major problems. You've dealt, the issue before us is reaching 1% of the US population, and it's growing. The last thing is, the, what the complaint that the tenants have today doesn't meet the bar, and it does, it's not, they couldn't give you any numbers to, to take your time today. Thank you. This is Donna Corret, also a director of SPOA.
Hello. Hi, I'm Donna Corret. Good afternoon, committee members. Thank you for hearing us. I'm from the Small Property Owners Association. We're an independent property owner group, which has studied housing policies and advocated for the property rights of small landlords for 31 years. I have brought with me copies of Attorney Stuart Schreier's testimony, and he has written to some of you personally. It is tough to get practicing attorneys to speak at these hearings due to work conflicts. So I, I do have this document. Attorney Schreier explains in depth why the Jim Brooks Act will violate other laws. Under both state and federal debt collector law, no creditor may communicate information about the debt to another other than the debtor. When you read the letter with the case law attached, you will understand this, his arguments. This bill is really a blunt instrument of a bill, and I think it seems, it seeks to tackle too many, too many issues at once. Because we don't have rent escrow in this Commonwealth, I think this will enable the free rent trick, which is a big problem, especially for small landlords. I don't understand why there's such an emphasis on punishing small landlords throughout their buildings and trusts in the Jim Brooks Act. I have it in the very document. Some couples use a Medicare trust, so that if one goes to the care facility, the other will not become penniless. Some trusts are irrevocable. Another group that is punished is out of state landlords. We live in a small state, and a landlord who lives in Nashua and owns, say, in Lowell, doesn't make, doesn't make him a bad landlord. I believe that the one through six-unit landlords that own in trust will not be exempt, even a single-family owner who wants to rent out for a while. I would like to be wrong on that, but I'm quite certain that I'm not. Overtime taxes arise on the exempt units, as they did under rent control. Give me a second. We have heard people speak at Boston City Hall who say that they simply wish to collect data on evictions and find out why they're happening. We sense that this is very far from the truth. This information soon becomes public information when the court case happens. The idea is for there to be rent and eviction control by intimidation, as Skip Scholming has written. We are quite certain that there will be data leaked to the anti-owner groups. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'm going to go in order that people sign up now. Thank you very much. Helen Jack.
I'm a homeowner who rents my two-family home in Austin, and I, more than most people, understand the need for affordable housing. This bill, HB 4142, does nothing to solve this problem. I have rented my home for many years, and I have always had an excellent relationship with my tenants. I charge a fair, a fair rent, and use the money to maintain the property, pay mortgage, property tax, income tax, and insurance, as well as to help pay my children's college education. This bill attempts to force in rent control by making owner now have to report every rent increase, or be subject to fines, penalties, and legal fees. If this bill had been in place, I would not have rented my home. And these reporting requirements are just too much of a burden, putting myself in a legal jeopardy, and create a, my nightmare, where I could be fined or punished, or miss, for missing a deadline, or worse, be used and be responsible for lawyers and legal bills just to defend myself. If this passes, I can guarantee several things will happen as a result. First, the number one, less people will be willing to rent their home, which means less apartments on the market. Number two, less apartments will be put, put up for rent, and the rent will go up instead of going down. Currently, there are more than thousands of vacant apartments in New York City, because homeowners are feared, are afraid to rent in it. That makes less out available, also cause market rent higher. Number three, with lower property values and less tax revenue, Boston will get more state aid, which means every other city in the town in the state will get less state aid. In order to, in other words, this bill will drain state money from every other city in the town, giving them less for schools and teachers. This bill benefits Boston at the expense of everyone else in Massachusetts, and is very unfair. If you vote yes, your city and towns will get less state aid, which will affect the people in your people in your towns and cities. I urge you to vote no on this bill, as it is unfair, unneeded, and expensive.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions from the panel? Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Suzanne Rohr and Rich Paris.
Good afternoon, Chair Brownsberger and Chair Cronin. I noticed that we were talking about, oh, Rich is the president of the Small Property Owners, and I'm a board member. I noticed we were talking a lot about mortgage foreclosures. I think that confuses the issue. What I did want to clarify is the scope of this law. A careful reading indicates that six or less units are exempt, provided that the owner is a natural person and is an owner occupant. That's going to cover a whole lot more people, because you have nominee trusts, you have LLCs, and the like. Now, another thing to keep in mind is, we've been talking about sending the city notices to quit and lease terminations. Also, many times, when you terminate a lease, you offer a new, you offer the tenant a new lease at a higher rent. Now, I'm looking at collecting this data, and I don't see how that's going to get more affordable housing. I see that tenants will be informed of their rights. Perhaps they're going to be able to fight eviction by rent withholding, all those kinds of things. Another possibility is rent control. That's definitely a possibility when you're talking about eviction control. So I strongly urge you to not go for this law. I don't have any property in Boston. I'm glad of it. I hope it doesn't spread to other cities if it does become law. Thank you very much. Rich?
Yes. Hi, this is, my name is Rich Paris. I'm the new president of Small Property Owners Association. I've never testified, so I'm kind of going at this as a novice, unlike others who are very experienced at testifying. Let me start with the foundational testimony that Sheila Dillon gave to city council about a year ago. Sheila Dillon, as you may know, is the mayor's director of housing with several degrees and expertise in housing. She directed her department to put together this proposal over, I think, more than a year. After she testified, one of the city councillors asked her specifically, "Ms. Dillon, how will your proposal specifically achieve its objectives?" I think it's a very good question. Her answer, which is on record, and I encourage all of you to see the videotape of the testimony, her answer on record is, "I don't know." That's the foundation for why we're here. The author of the legislation said, "I don't know." Eleven of 12 city councils passed the proposal, and that's why it's here now. So if you would vote for this, the foundation for its proposal is, "I don't know." Here's what we do know, and these are statistics that people don't like talking about, because they shot a light on how progressive Massachusetts and Boston in particular citizens are. There are, in 2014, the mayor's report reported that there were 52,000 units that were subsidized in some way, state, federal, all kinds of ways subsidized a unit, to help people who are even qualified with a subsidized unit. That number of times the city's official metric of 2.4 people per unit in 2014 was 126,000 people in Boston, living in a form of a subsidized home based on their qualification. Since 2014, with all the building, there are several more thousand units, several more thousand people are living in an affordable subsidized unit, which I completely applaud, and I think is where these kinds of goals should go. This Jim Brooks proposal has nothing to do with affordable housing. It's about, my name is Forced Lease Renewal. It wants individual property owners to be forced to renew a lease in perpetuity, which will lead to frozen rents. The proposal, which I find kind of surprising, never discusses income qualification. So anybody of any income would benefit from having a Forced Lease Renewal or a frozen rent. Look no further than rent control back in the 1670s, and the mayor of Cambridge lived in a rent-controlled apartment. And that was entirely legal. And that's where these kinds of very well-intended proposals lead. People gain the system, people are connected, and they get a hold of, you know, a benefited apartment, and their income has no consequence. And that's the case in New York City, as I said. Another, oh god, another, I'll hand these notes to you later. Another very important issue is that the fourth data collection violates several state and federal privacy laws. So what this law would do is it would cause law-abiding citizens to break one law to comply with another. I do have more to say, and I don't want to go past my...
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Let's try to keep on schedule. We've got a lot of people here, but do you have, we'd very much welcome if you just want to shoot us a copy of your favorite thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I could go through the full ones really fast, just their headers.
Really?
Okay, really fast.
Yeah, it's in seconds.
Okay. One thing I'd like all of you to do, which I did, was kind of scary, is to quote-unquote "like" on Facebook, La Vida Urbana, to see what their tactics are. Once they receive this kind of information, they have very intimidating protests in front of lots of buildings. These kinds of protests would chill builders from building Massachusetts, along with builders...
Oh, it's happening. You'd be tempted to be close. I don't see why not.
Okay, okay.
Do you want to welcome your testimony?
Okay, I will send them to you.
Yeah. We'll get to the rest of you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I got King Pan. In a second.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Thank you very much to let me know, let me express my deeply concern about this bill, HB 4142. Definitely against this bill. So my name is King. I own a small property. I have a...
What do I got to say?
I'm sorry. Okay. Yes, I own a small property, and I have three family as my tenants. So last September, I want to increase my rent to $50 per month, and my tenants doesn't agree with that. So we have a very nice talking and negotiating, and finally, we find a deal that we only increase $25 per month. So everybody's happy. So now, I have another two tenants, but this bill requests me to report my increase of the rent to the city. But my question is that, how the city keep this information confidential and secret? So if this information leaked to my two tenants, all my tenants could be talked together against me, doing rent strike. At that time, I can't have time. I'm busy working. I don't have time to deal with too many problems. Maybe they call the city, maybe they have a whole bunch of problems. I can't deal with that. So eventually, in fact, the current law is very pro-tenant. Just like a couple of years ago, I have to evict a tenant. It took me six months to evict a tenant after he stopped paying rent, and I lost more than $8,000. So if this happened, I have no money to pay property tax. I mean, this bill will lead me to pay, have no rent income, I can't pay property tax. I have to be bankrupt. If more and more landlords become bankrupt, so how can we pay the property tax? The city will be poor. I mean, the state aid will be affected. So, I mean, this bill is not good for anybody. It's not good for the landlord. It's not good for the tenant. It's not good for the city. I definitely urge you to against this bill. Please vote no to this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir, for your testimony. George Corret.
Cut it off at the pass by giving you the written testimony. Because I have some written testimony, thank you, members of the committee, I'll be extremely brief. I'm mostly concerned about the unintended consequences of bills that appear to be zero-sum games, where you give some tenant a benefit, and then maybe it only takes it out of, it's only a bother for the landlord. I wanted to point out some Stanford University economists that studied laws in San Francisco, and where they found that for every dollar of benefit that went to some subgroup of tenants, it cost other tenants $10 of extra expenses. And the main driver was people, property owners, withdrawing property from the housing market. And I'm sure we even heard in earlier testimony about the theory that there are some speculators in Boston that buy property and don't have any tenants in it. Now, as a landlord who's been in business for 30 years, I find that fairly ridiculous. I don't have enough money to speculate like that. But I can see why some people might want to speculate it and not want to become a landlord, if they can afford not to. And so laws like this, it's more than just information. It's obviously power. I can teach anyone here how to go to masscourts.org and find out all filings that happened in the last 24 hours. You don't have to wait for a year to get the information from masscourts.org. And so, anyway, so that's a thing. We don't need more draconian regulations that cause people to remove housing from the market. Thank you.
Any questions? Uh, Don Yuen Lee. Don Yuen Lee. David E. Myatt. David Myatt. It's La Vida Urbana.
Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to testify today. My name is David E. Myatt. I live in Roxbury, right on the JP line, and I'm here representing not only city life, but artists in general, since I'm one of the artists who's benefited from the VRA's Housing for Art Live Workspaces. Sometimes the VRA has been our friend, and sometimes they haven't. But in this case, we're on, I'm on both sides of the issue. So what are we talking about here? Someone said earlier, they talked about what the city official's saying, "I don't know." Well, "I don't know" is the beginning of wisdom. What is wisdom? Wisdom is love and knowledge put together. So what we seek in city life is a sharing of housing resources, not greed, social justice, not inequality, and cooperation, not competition. And city life represents people power, the people of the city, joined together to save their communities. Now, I have a history with this, too. If any of you remember, The Piano Factory. I'm a veteran of The Piano Factory wars of the 1990s, where we went up against our building owner, and we won. We won the right to stay in our units. It was an expiring, used unit, building, and he prepaid the mortgage and tried to kick us all out. Took four years, but legislators, City Hall, sometimes the VRA, and neighbors helped us, and we prevailed. I can't believe I'm here having to fight the same fight all over again. So now, city life has done the type of work that has inspired groups like this across the country to save their housing. So what we want to do is draw the line here. I've lived in Boston since '84, and since '85, I can't tell you how many times I've been displaced because of gentrification. And still it goes on today, and is worse than it was then. So what we're trying to do at city life is stem the tide of greed, because it's destructive. It's literally holding back the city and humanity itself. Love is the force that holds all things together. And we love our community, and we're trying to save it. And we want to work with those who feel that way about their community. And I think all of us, deep down inside, regardless of what issue, side of the issue we're on, feel the same. So back to where I began, wisdom is knowledge plus love. That's the ancient axiom. And we want to save our communities. We want, we love our communities, and we're using the knowledge we've gained here through these fights to save it, not just for ourselves, but for everyone. And we hope you will join us in that fight for good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your testimony. Questions from the panel?
Question? None?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Lauren Song and Andrea Parks.
Good afternoon, Chairman Brownsberger and Chairwoman Cronin and members of this joint committee and the judiciary. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of the Jim Brooks Community Stabilization Act. I wasn't quite sure how I should spend my three minutes here, because I did unfortunately hear a lot of very disturbing mischaracterizations of the homeroel petition. And to the extent that it might be helpful, maybe I'll just cover some of those issues right here. First of all, I think we all recognize that rent control has been illegal in Massachusetts for quite some time. This is certainly not a rent control ordinance or a homo petition. It is a very, very modest proposal, actually, about letting tenants know what are existing rights already, so that enables them to actually exercise existing rights. There is no substantial changes in the law. There are no rights that are created under this law, except for homeowners. And in that case, what that provides is, it provides an opportunity for a homeowner who has been foreclosed to be treated as a tenant. Reasonable rents have to be agreed upon, and if not, then, you know, they can't stay. But currently, all the rights that a landlord has to evict a tenant all exist. That includes non-payment of rent, refusal to pay a rent increase, bad acts on the part of the tenant, et cetera, are all still intact. And the same judicial process that's required in order for a landlord to properly evict a tenant are all in existence. The way the summary process eviction procedure works right now is actually, it does require a copy of the notice to quit to be provided to the court. The problem with that is that it doesn't provide advance time for the city or agencies that may be able to help stabilize that tenancy by providing rental assistance, for example, or housing search assistance, to enable a smooth transition for people who do need to relocate. There are people who do need to relocate, there's no doubt about that. Housing becomes unaffordable, and they need to find new places to live with their families. But rather than having a very traumatic experience of being displaced right there on the spot, because when people, and let me just backtrack one more thing, this only covers landlords who own seven or more units. So you heard a lot of testimony from small property owners, for whom this doesn't have any applicability in terms of even the notice requirement, which is all that it is. So just to clarify on that issue, but it would enable tenants who get these notices to know right away that there are rights, that there are agencies like Legal Services. I'm a Legal Services attorney. I work with Greater Boston Legal Services, and for the past few years, my work has been focused almost exclusively on the massive displacement crisis that are effectuated by corporate speculators. And that is primarily what this act is targeted at. What we're seeing is intense activity on the part of speculators, doing, building clearouts, basically providing no reason for any eviction. And this requires a tenant to be notified of their rights and an opportunity to contact people, so that they know that services are available and get, and if landlord fails to provide those notices, then eviction action would be improper. If this does not happen, what we're seeing as legal services and service providers is downstream activity. People actually see notices to quit, and when they're served by corporate owners, they're on legal letterhead, they're served by constables, it looks like the legal notice to evict. And people don't realize that actually, they have time to, they don't have to, you know, quickly move out, pack their stuff, double up with relatives who are already overcrowded, try to seek shelter already, you know, taxing the already very taxed shelter system if they have minor children to qualify with. Section 8 tenants that are not able to stay in Boston anymore because the payment standards are too high, and then they're losing their Section 8 voucher because they can't find places within Boston that they can afford. So this affords time and an opportunity to get legal resources and social supports for people. I'm happy to answer any questions on the legal aspects of the law.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Thank you, Chair Brownsberger, Chair Cronin, members of the committee. My name is, I'll be very brief. My name is Andrea Park. I'm an attorney at the Massachusetts Law Reform Institute. We are a statewide poverty law and policy center. We advocate on behalf of low-income people... We advocate on behalf of low-income people and also support civil legal aid advocates like Lauren across the Commonwealth. And I'm also here to support H4142. And I'm not going to speak about all the details of the bill. I think you have the legislation in front of you. I encourage you to think about the testimony we've heard, you know, separate, anything that strikes you as trying to prevent people from understanding what their rights are should trouble you. I think I would like to submit some written testimony that would provide some of this information that we've all been talking about. I think that data is where we need to look, not to anecdotes. I think that this committee is well aware and the Commonwealth has undertaken a lot of access to justice initiatives. And this is, as Lauren said, a very modest bill. It's fairly narrow. And what it would do is be the beginning of being able to kind of show us what this looks like. I think you've all read about the displacement that's happening, the development that's happening so quickly in the Boston area, and to be able to start to understand, as you heard the city and the mayor's office talk about, what this would provide. I think, I just want to briefly address the debt collection issues that have been raised. I think those are pretty much a red herring. I think that there are municipalities across the United States where there aren't these types of notices being provided. Those rules are put in place for different purposes. And also, there are exceptions for small property owners, obviously, and just on the access to justice issue, there's a lot happening in the court system. There's a lot of discussion right now among different administrative agencies about upstream services. And this is one very small way in which I think that we can use this opportunity that we have and use, you know, make a silver lining out of what's happening and be able to really understand what's happening and target the resources that we have that are stolen. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We look forward to your testimony. We're aware that both of your organizations are close to these issues and have a lot to offer, so be welcome with your testimony.
Thank you. Thank you.
We've got a panel, including Darlene Lambos, Mark Leu, and, I'm sorry, Angie Mauer, Reggie Stewart, George Chee. Is that panel here?
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Mark Liu. I'm testifying on behalf of the Chinese Progressive Association. We represent...
Let me hold you up for a second. I hate to say this. I'm looking at your butt.
Sure.
There's nothing wrong with the butt, but are you here for that House 3361?
I am not. I just came from that earlier. I know I'm, yeah, we are here in support of House Bill 4142.
Okay, okay.
Yes, a lot of things going on in this state house today.
Put the button back on. I just didn't want you to...
No, it's okay. It's confusing.
You can work it out. You can work it out. It's all good.
No worries.
Go ahead.
So, once again, we represent over a thousand members in the greater Boston area and serve about 3,000 people every year through our services. We see the Jim Brooks Stabilization Act as a key measure of stabilizing our neighborhoods we live in and keeping our families in their homes. As other speakers talked about, we're in the middle of a major displacement crisis. We've been at our work around development housing issues for 40 years, helping tenants, former tenant associations, helping preserve affordable housing in neighborhood, almost 500 units in the past five years. And we've never seen this much displacement in Chinatown and other neighborhoods in the city as much as now. Currently, we're helping 55 households who are at risk of displacement. And those are the ones that we know of, that know to come for help. And the whole point is, this bill is to let folks know more what their rights are, have more knowledge about where they can receive them and be able to seek help. And for the city of Boston, as they spoke about, I think, why they're supporting this bill, help craft more solutions that are more targeted around displacement. It's an urgent issue. People are losing their homes now. In our members' experiences, they could remain homeless for years, relying on friends' couches, or staying in faraway shelters where they have to choose between getting their kids to school or losing their jobs. I also want to address some of what some of the folks who are opposing this have said. I think there's, I think there's a lot of false equivalencies here. We're debating the Jim Brooks Stabilization Act, which is knowledge about your rights and resources and notification to the city. It's not rent control. We're not talking about regulation. And we, when tenants know their rights, we've seen that landlords who want to do the right thing have been able to negotiate agreements for tenants to stay in their buildings longer and for, to help stabilize our neighborhoods. So we hope that the committee will support this bill and see the merits and vote it out of committee. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time today. My name is Reggie Stewart. I'm a real estate broker in Boston. I would like to voice my enthusiastic support for the Jim Brooks Stabilization Act, and I'd like to frame it in the following way. I took a quick snapshot yesterday of the rental market in some of Boston's neighborhoods. What I found is that over the past five years, rents in Roxbury have increased by about 26%. In Mattapan, rents have increased by about 29%. In Dorchester, where I live, rents have increased by about 32%. The average rents in Boston as a whole have been rising for at least the past seven years. Only two cities in this nation, New York City and San Francisco, have higher average rents than Boston. Now, if we frame this data next to other data, which shows the median household income for African-Americans is $41,000, the picture gets a lot darker. Assuming that rent should take up no more than 40% of one's monthly income, which by HUD standards make you rent burdened, because it should be 30%, the typical African-American family in this city can only afford about $1,400 in rent. That does not work in a city where the average lease last year was over $2,000. Even if families were to find an apartment for $1,400, which they won't in this market, it would cost up to $5,600 in deposits and fees just to secure the apartment. This does not include other moving costs, movers, truck rental, storage fees, et cetera. Frame this next to the data that shows us that the median net worth for African-American families in the city is $8 versus a quarter million dollars for white families. And then tell me where those moving costs are supposed to come from. Make no mistake that passing this bill is a small but vital step to keeping homeowners and renters in their homes and stabilizing our most vulnerable communities. A no vote on this bill will send a clear message to African-Americans, people of color, and other working-class families that we are not welcome in the city of Boston. And all of us will remember that message when your seats are up for reelection. And to the sponsor, co-sponsors of this bill, to those that will vote yes, I will say this. This bill is important, but it's only one small step towards stabilizing the most vulnerable constituents in the districts that you represent. You cannot discuss stability or other quality of life issues in Boston without dealing with the embarrassingly wide wealth gap between whites and African-Americans. As I stated earlier, net worth for African-American families is $8. Median net worth for white families is nearly a quarter of a million dollars. And for Boston to claim to be a bastion of progressivism and be touted as a city of first, we should be ashamed that this city leads the nation in racial wealth disparity. And our representatives who tout themselves as progressives, some of whom are people of color, should be particularly ashamed when the recent series on racism in The Boston Globe cited this data about the racial wealth gap. It captured the attention of people around this country. Yet our representatives, from the city councilor to the mayor's office to this body, have largely been silent on the issue. So understand that I and others will be calling on all of you to tackle this issue head-on and unapologetically with policy. Concrete policy that directly addresses the wealth position of African-Americans in other vulnerable communities in the city and Commonwealth. If you, as legislators, choose not to be a city and state of first when it comes to closing the racial wealth gap, then we, the voters, will be the first to cast our ballots and show you all the door at the next election. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I'm Colleen Fitzpatrick. I'm a community organizer at Fenway Community Development Corporation. We're a 45-year-old nonprofit that manages over 300 units of affordable housing, and we serve over 1,000 residents and our community members each year. I'm going to start with our story, but I also have some testimony from Angie Liu from Asian Community Development Corporation. So, just to address a few of the things that have been said so far, I just want to clarify that this is absolutely in no way rent control. In fact, it, it isn't even very much changing the law. It's really ensuring equal access to the law, to knowing the housing rights that you already have. This is not providing any new right to a tenant, other than they're going to get notification about what they already have. And why this is important is exactly because there is a power dynamic between landlords and tenants. We know from Greater Boston Legal Services that 93% of tenants, and this is of those who go to housing court, and I'm going to get back to that, 93% of tenants who do not, who go to housing court do not have representation, not have legal representation. 97% of landlords do have that. And once people go to housing court, I mean, there's 60 to 70%, I believe, that are settled without displacement. There's some kind of deal that works, that gets worked out in housing court. But the piece that I want to add to this is that I, there's, part of it is the gravity of what we don't know, is we don't know how many people leave when they get that first notice to quit and they don't go to housing court. But I'm going to give an example, because that's what I have. So in Clearway Street in the Fenway, there was over 100 residents were displaced from that building. There was only a handful that came to seek Fenway CDC's help. By the time we were working with them, it was too late for many others. They had already left. They had moved. Most people, I feel, just, I mean, really, so that's 100 people, and we helped five to seven people. So, I mean, think about those numbers. I can't give you a fact, because we don't have the facts. We don't know how many evictions are taking place across Boston. I think that's a huge problem with what we're seeing in East Boston, with what we're seeing in Chinatown, with what we're seeing in the Fenway. And so if we don't know this, how can we do something about it? I mean, we're essentially trying to advocate blind. There's people getting pushed out every day. And this often comes in the form, you know, so much has been said about, about rent control today, but let's talk about what's happening without rent control. So we have the figures that were just stated about rents going up at 26%, 29% in some of our communities, predominantly of color, right? So lots of folks are at risk of displacement there. And the wages are just not keeping up with that. And so the forum comes in a get-out rent increase. So landlords will say suddenly, you know, your rent is now, you know, your rent was $1,000 a month, now it's $1,500 a month, you know, as much as 50%, 100%, 200% increases that we've seen. And there's no check on that whatsoever. They convert to condos, they convert to luxury. And sorry, I'm just wrapping right up. But I just want to stress that the only piece of this that even had to go through the State House is to just cause eviction for former homeowners. And I think the activists and community members felt that was so important that we wanted to go through this whole other step to protect those people. Okay, these are very vulnerable people who probably bought their homes at a very different market from today's market, right? They've seen their property taxes go up, their homes have been foreclosed, but they're somehow, they're staying in their homes and paying rent to the banks. I'm sure the banks want to buy up these properties. I'm sure investors want to buy up these properties. They're at high risk. So that's why we want just cause evictions to protect good tenants, people that want to stay into their homes, people that want to age in place in homes they bought 40 to 50 years ago. And I think the investors and banks can hold up a few more years there. So on behalf of Fenway CDC, I'd urge you to pass the Jim Brooks Stabilization Act to make sure that people have equal access to housing rights. And in addition, from Angie Liu and Asian Community Development Corporation...
We can submit a written testimony.
Sorry, sorry. I'll submit that.
Are there questions for members of this panel?
We have, we have one more, George Lee. Hello. Good afternoon. My name is George Lee. I'm a member of Keep It 100 for Real Affordable Housing and Racial Justice. And I'd like to say a few things. One is, this is not a tenant versus small landlords bill. This is really trying to address the displacement and gentrification crisis that's really being fueled by a lot of outside corporate landlords with larger buildings. And to the opponents here from, who are small landlords, there's a lot of mischaracterization. You know, I don't know if we have half an hour of testimony left. That's plenty of time. If you would please go through the bill and show this committee exactly where it says that landlords aren't allowed to increase their rent, or where it says they have to report that, that'd be great to see, because it's actually not in there. This is not about attacking small landlords. It's about protecting everyone and stabilizing communities. There's a, to go back to the previous comments around, you know, Massachusetts and Boston having a progressive image, I mean, there's a lot of talk now about the President of the United States and how he's attacking people of color, how he's attacking women, and how he's attacking immigrants. But it's important that we don't just pass the buck and look at what's happening there, but look at what policies are happening here in this state and in Boston to really protect people of color, women and immigrants. Because the displacement and gentrification crisis, that's who it's attacking. There's been a disinvestment in communities of color where there was white flight. Folks refused to invest, didn't want to live there. And now, those are the same neighborhoods that people want to go, and the corporations are coming up and buying up land and kicking folks out. There's a lot of women-headed households who are facing evictions and displacement who are struggling to take care of their children, take care of their families. And it's no use to have sanctuary cities that are safe from the federal immigration authorities if people can't even live in the city because they're getting forced out. So if folks are serious about addressing race, gender, and immigration, then we need to address it by passing laws like this that would allow at least just a basic amount of data and a basic amount of knowing your rights that's available to tenants and landlords facing, tenants and former homeowners facing eviction. The other thing is, as much as it is important, as someone said before, to work for society that's built in social justice and that really is about equity, it's not just about helping folks who have suffered the most, although that's extremely important and it's morally the right thing to do, but also what happens to people of color, women and immigrants, as Lani Quinier writes, it's canary in the coal mine. If you have policies that target the most vulnerable populations, that will destabilize communities and society overall. We saw this in 2008 with the financial crisis that was built on the backs of subprime predatory mortgages and loans, ended up destabilizing the whole global economy. And in the same way now, we need to look out for the folks at the bottom who are being most affected, because that will affect communities as a whole. So, for example, there's 49,000 households making less than $30,000 a year in Boston who pay more than 30% or 50% of their income on rent. Now, what that means is, if you compare that, there's only 11,000 folks making between about $50,000 and $80,000 total. So 49,000 compared to 11,000. And so if you actually had, were able to stabilize the households, those 49,000 people, that's 49 households, actually, it's 49,000 households that aren't competing for the same units that those 11,000 households need. We know trickle-down economics doesn't work, so we need to have, figure out trickle-up economics, basically. And again, this bill would help stabilize communities and help folks stay in their homes and eventually help the overall city and state. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other, would you have any questions on this panel? Okay. Other questions for members of this panel? Thank you very much, your gentlemen. Very much appreciate it. Thank you very much. Do we have somebody named Aha? AHA?
Where is the group? Good afternoon. My name is Aha Wu, and I represent small property owners. I would urge you to vote no on Housing Bill 4142, the Jim Baker Stabilization Act.